Okay, I'm gonna call the Tremont Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, we have Lawson Wolson, Brett with him, Beth Gott, myself, Mark Good. And since Jeff is called in and said he wasn't able to make it, I'll take a motion to excuse his absence.
Motion.
Motion second, excuse Jeff's absence, all in favor? Or nothing? Okay, I don't see where we need to change the agenda at all, anybody? Okay, we need to approve minutes, we're gonna have to once again table October 25th because we need those two and Jeff to do it, because Beth and I weren't there, so.
I'll make a motion to table the review and approval of minutes for October 25th.
Motion second on table to table the minutes of October 25th, 2022, all in favor? unanimous, okay. Minutes for December 13th, 2022, I saw a couple typos there, if you look, Adjustment Adoption of Agenda Motion by Mr. of Wolson, Lawson of Wolson?
I've been called more.
It's your title there?
Yep.
And on the last page, I saw two motions, motion by, motion by, motion by, motion by, repeated there, that's all I saw. So unless somebody else has something else to add, I take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Well, I think there's, in my notes from December 13th.
Okay.
I have, we actually voted, we made a motion, voted to deny the land use ordinance for plentyhead, and that's not reflected on in the minutes.
That's right, good catch.
I also, in my notes, have that the conversion standards was met, I don't have very good notes, I sort of circled that and scribbled met, but, and this says that it was not met, the minutes say it was not met.
Like or which one?
Paragraph D, it's the last one, it's the last.
Page number?
Uh, seven.
Seven, okay.
In the minutes, it says not met, motion by Lawson, seconded by Gaff, but by Beth, that the road driveway not met comments, vote three oh.
Okay.
And my notes, which are not very conclusive, say that we voted that it was met, and I'm just wondering if Beth and Mark have any, either recollection or a record of.
That's where the tape cut out, right?
That's right, how we voted for conversion standards.
My recollection is that we did vote this way.
Okay, I'm not, I like.
I realize that the tape cut out, my notes say no conversion existing structure, and it was a three oh vote that it was met.
That was met.
I couldn't find my notes, I was looking over, I don't know where they go.
Did you take them?
Denise has notes that are consistent with what Mr. Barr just said, that it was a three oh vote and it was met.
I have it, I have it not.
Do you find your notes, oh good.
Great, okay.
Oh, there's met, okay, well, there's another one, okay.
So then.
Another good catch.
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes for December 13th with four changes. The first is in the third paragraph where it says Adjustment Adoption of Agenda to remove the of between Mr. and Wolson. The second one is to change the motion on page seven, conversion standards, which was found as met, and that the motion by Lawson, seconded by Gaff, by Beth, was that the conversion standards requirement was met, so it was obviously was met. The third change is that the, in the next paragraph where it says motion by, motion by Lawson to remove the second motion by.
Yep.
Referring to the table and the application of January 10th. And the fourth one is to add a paragraph that records the three to zero vote denying the land use ordinance findings of fact.
There's also fifth one, you didn't mention the second, the other, motion by, motion by.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, you did, you got both, oh, you done both, okay, good enough. Do I have a second?
Second, I second.
Okay, motion second on the table to approve the minutes of December, was it 13th?
Yes.
As amended, all in favor? And I guess all opposed, who's gonna abstain? Brett's gonna abstain because he wasn't at the meeting, okay, good enough. Thank you, folks. I looked over for those minutes, I mean, my notes. All business, plentyhead campground, final decision.
So I went back through the minutes and my notes from October, November, and December, and we've, now focus on the site plan review, which is still outstanding. The land use ordinance, I think that we concluded, we just recorded that for the site plan review findings of fact was never voted on.
Voted on.
Approved or denied. The, in October, on October 11th, we voted four to nothing that the access to site criteria was not met, and that was based, mostly on a conversation around queuing in October. In November, we received new information or revised. Site plan had a discussion about queuing, but actually didn't vote on the site plan review, Article C, paragraph C. We discussed, we've discussed it, reference the land use ordinance, and so, and that one, right, yeah. So I guess the question is, do we need to, or want to revisit the access to the site criteria in the site plan review ordinance, paragraph C?
Why would we?
Because when we voted on it in October, really, we received new information since we voted on it in October. Maybe it's moot, I don't know, we need to revisit it? I'm not suggesting.
At that November 15th meeting, we had a similar thing in the land use ordinance, right? As we were reviewing that, roads, driveways, and driveway opening standards, and it was three to one.
Correct.
With Brett opposing.
That's right. And so I think that the record as it stands right now is that the access to the site criteria is not met in site plan review ordinance, and if we don't, if we don't even feel that we need to discuss that at all, then I'll make a motion about the.
Site plan review.
The site plan review.
I don't feel a need to go over all this again. Anybody else?
No, I mean, I will, no, I will discuss at the appropriate time when we, whenever we decide to move on.
Okay, well, then I'll make a, we'll make a motion, we'll see if that's the right time.
Will we be able to be heard before, after the motion is made?
Be able to do what?
Will we be able to be heard after the motion is made, or should we be heard before the motion is made?
We'll see what the mo. What are you gonna do?
We don't know what the motion is at this point.
Yeah, why don't we make a motion, and then we get a discussion about that motion? Is that, okay, sure?
Sure.
I make a motion that we, that the site plan review findings of fact for plentyhead campground is denied because the access in the site requirement is not met.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second on the table to find that the site plan review ordinance findings of fact should be denied because the access to the site condition was not met, correct?
That's right.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think the findings of fact are what they are, so I don't think we're saying we deny the findings of fact, I think what we're saying is, we're, that we were finding that the.
Application.
The application does not meet site, the site plan review criteria because of that particular, you know, line item.
Yep.
I voted no, I didn't, you know, at the time, wasn't really sure why, I, it just didn't feel right to me.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've thought about it since, and, you know, just a couple of quick points, and then we can, we can go to the vote, or whatever people want to do. It felt like, to me, like it was, again, something that kind of arose pretty quickly out of, and I didn't hear a lot of discussion about that before, and it was highly technical, it feels like a very highly technical legal issue.
Are you talking about the queuing or the CFMA access?
CFMA access. The queuing, I think we're, that's in the weeds somewhere. The, you know, I started thinking about it, I, it was like, if I were an applicant, what would I do, and I, I think what it could do, because as I recall, what we determined was, it is now a driveway, and there's some definitions there, I don't, it's been a while since I looked at them, but it needs to be a road in order to, for it to access a business, so therefore, you can't, you can't, you know, convert it from a driveway back to a road because it's no longer a B and B and blah, blah, blah.
According to your attorney general's.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, it's a dream, because I thought, well, you know, all one would need to do, may, I don't know, would be to put a boat storage facility there, stick a tent up, and have a, and open a business for boats, boat storage.
But that's not on the table, there's nothing on, that's not.
I get, I get that. My point, though, is when you, when you make rulings that create kind of, kind of bizarre incentives and create incentives to do things that are actually inconsistent with what people want, you, you just need to be thoughtful about that. It, it just occurs to me that there's something not quite right with how this is zoned, like, I don't know if it's the fact that that zoning for the CFMA, the way it comes across that property, you know, it's on the other side of the road from the, from the water, it's just, and it creates, to me, it creates a perverse incentive, and a fairly easy workaround that generates economic waste, and it just feels weird to me to have a rule that does that. I don't know that that, that changes where we end up, because it still says what it says, but it just, it just, it creates an unusual result, and I'll, that's just how I feel about it.
The CFMA zone, I think, is the, for blue belt that goes around the harbor.
No, no, it's.
No?
The red.
Oh.
Blue's harbor shoreline.
I was, I was one harbor over.
Right.
The red. And the fact that it goes through a property line, seems like a weird way to zone it, I agree with that, it does seem like it has the effect of preserving the maritime activities, and I think your point about like, building a boat storage shed seems to be, that's how I understand the intent of the zone, to be, the zone writers want more storage sheds and less.
Yeah, and I get that, but the part that we're talking about, what they're gonna actually do the activities, isn't in that zone, like, so the other kind of anomaly is, like, it's just this little sliver, it, it just, it doesn't, to me, it's an, I don't know if it's harbor, it's just an, it's a weird result, it's just a weird result.
I don't know.
But then again, we didn't create this.
That's why, look, I'm saying, it doesn't.
If you don't like what it's on, maybe you should talk to the chairman of the, the coverage of plant task force. Mr. Barr, did you want to say something? Are you folks done? Or Brett, were you done?
No, that's it, that's it, yeah. Thank you very much, thank you for entertaining us one last time. So at the October 13th meeting, you had determined that the, the access that we had designed was not at.
The 11th, October 11th.
11th, I'm sorry, October 11th. And we asked an opportunity to address that issue, and the board agreed, and we came back, and there was an hour-long discussion on the 15th, and much like I just heard a member, initial Lawson and Brett said, tonight, they also said on the 15th that their concerns that led to their vote on the 13th were satisfied, but we had this other issue, which was, is it a road, is it a driveway, you can, and I think you made the motion referencing seven C or something like that.
Yes, yeah.
And if that's the basis for your decision as opposed to October 13th, October 11th, then I just wanted to fit that one more time.
Yeah, and I think that that's clear in the land use ordinance, Article I, the motion that Mark made about.
I think you want to make sure the queuing issue is, is not an issue. It's not, for, it isn't for me, I think we were okay with the, with the, with, yeah, with the solution we talked about, which I think was a slight, why am they gonna sign and keeps people up top, and, yeah, yeah.
And I'm sorry, maybe I could have said, well, we didn't need to do this, but I tried to watch the hearing on December 10th, for the 13th, whatever date that one was, and it stopped before it was over.
The 13th, yeah.
So I wasn't sure what the basis of your motion had been, that, thank you.
Yes, when I went back to turn off the machine, there was some message about disk space full or something, and that's where it cut off.
There's some joke in there about long, plenty more meetings.
The, the machine revolted.
That enough?
Well, you got to the last meeting of the year before you used up your allotted space.
It's my understanding the town manager went down and cleared off some stuff, so we should have plenty of, plenty of space now.
New year.
New year, new disk space. So that is, anybody else have any comments, because we have a motion on the table? Okay, here are nothing. Call for a vote, want to restate your motion again, please?
The motion is to deny the, I guess, we're not ready to find the, we're talking about the findings of fact, and we're denying.
For site plan review.
For site plan review, and the motion is to deny the findings of fact portion of the application, because the access in the site requirement is not met.
Yeah, I think we would, what we would say is that the, and again.
Please, help me, yeah.
We would say is that the applicant has not met the standards for site plan review, and in particular, whatever one you want to say.
Great, okay, yeah, so it's not about approving it or denying it, it's about, the motion is that the findings of fact is a different.
Well, hold on, that's different than the motion we just had a second on, right?
I don't care, I'm voting no either way.
Let's vote that down, let's vote that down, and then you restate your, a new motion, okay?
All right, so the motion on the table is about denying the findings of fact.
Yeah.
A fully written.
Okay, all in favor? Seeing none? All opposed? Okay, or nothing, now, please.
I'll have to make a motion to find that the site plan review criteria have not been met, because the access in the site criteria was not met.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second on the table to find the site plan review criteria has not been met because of the access to the site condition.
Yes.
Okay, has not been met, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Three? All opposed? One? Surprise, okay.
I had to, right, I mean, I can't, you know.
I'll talk to you later. Now.
Now I can make a motion.
Yes.
To deny the plentyhead campground application.
No, we have to deny the.
The application, no, is it?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and on the, because the criteria in the land use ordinance and the site plan ordinance were not met. You want me to be more specific?
Please restate that, so I can understand.
We're denying the plentyhead campground application because the site plan review and land use ordinance criteria are not met.
Second.
Motion second on the table to deny the plentyhead campground application because the site plan review findings of fact or standards and land use ordinance standards have not been met, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Nothing, all opposed? Okay, that's it, right, John? Anything else on this? I think so. Thank you, folks, for putting up with this over.
Months.
Almost a year, actually, it was a year when they first came to us.
Yeah, before me, before I came here.
Short-term rental discussion. Brett, you weren't at the last meeting, I don't know, do you?
Yeah, but I know that the board have select, there was a, maybe a petition.
There was, there was a petition, Ms. Ashworth there, sent out, it was not a legal petition to force anything.
Yeah.
Because there weren't enough signatures, but that's one thing that got this started, their petition was asking for, to define what a short-term vacation rental is in the town, and require those offering their properties in such a manner to obtain a fee-based permit from the town for each residence they offer, some or all the permit fees collected could be used to pay for the administration and enforcement of this ordinance. I'm not totally clear what the select board is asking us to do completely, I know they want us to do something by August, so we can get on the warrant for the November elections, and we do have the chairman of the board of selectmen here, Jamie Thurlow, here, and maybe he can be, tell us exactly what they expect us to do.
I don't know if we're the right people to be, what we expect, but basically, it went to James, the town attorney, and he felt that you guys were the ones, obviously, to handle these matters. We did get in, not to be a petition, but 25 people who have signed with that, that paper that says what their concerns are, I'm not really sure what, how to move forward with it, or how we were gonna move forward with it, I think I was gonna do like a public hearing or something, just to get, you know, more people and see what everybody thinks of the idea, and, and, you know, I don't think there's any harm in, in getting a registration set up, but anything further than that obviously takes a lot of time and thought and effort.
No, other towns.
Didn't Harbor do something like this?
Other towns.
Bar Harbor did, in, in ordinance regarding, or standards regarding weekly rentals, yeah.
Pay a fee at the beginning of the season.
And that's helping push things our way, too. I'm sorry, what?
And they just charge a fee at the beginning of each season.
And they.
Well, there's more than that.
Yeah, but that, yeah.
And so that would be the big, well, I don't, I guess their, their two big potential steps would be taxing or having a fee and limiting.
Cap against, cap against, except for limited or something like that.
Right.
I wonder what, Portland did a pretty comprehensive one, too, it didn't pass, we could look at what.
I don't know what they did, yeah.
They did, they tried to do, and it was all through similar concerns.
Not deserved, too.
Yep, yep, I mean, I would just pick two or three towns and just get what they did and their draft legislation and take a look at it.
Well, to me, there's really two, two issues here. One would be registration, requiring these folks to register and to meet some basic, I'm concerned about safety, okay? We know that, from the fire chief, that there was a weekly rental, firing a weekly rental, and the folks didn't even know where they were living exactly, so it really delayed the fire trucks getting there. And another one, there was an alarm, I think it was in the Bass Harbor Woods, and that whoever the rental agent is, had a nice list of, you know, who to call, but because they were based in Bar Harbor, they had the people called the Bar Harbor Fire Department rather than their local fire department, and that, once again, delayed things, fortunately, it was just a false alarm. So, there's the safety issues, and, and, you know, I don't know if some rentals, you know, you require smoke alarms and things like that, you know, to me, there should be some sort of registration, maybe a fee, an annual inspection to make sure that they're making certain life safety, meeting those, those standards, whatever we set, and there's that thing, then the, going further, the second step would be if we desire to actually have some real standards of restrictions or whatever regarding weekly rentals, because we do know that it's a problem, or that a lot of people feel it's a problem, the town is taking away from year-round housing and things like that.
I mean, to me, anything less than six months is short term.
Yeah.
We'll see how that goes, John.
It's, excuse me, hold, wait a minute, it's not really, and we could hold a public hearing, or we could accept some public comment here, that sort of thing.
Right.
Frankly, I think that we shouldn't do this ourselves, I think we should ask the selectman and town manager to hire Noel Lawson, who's studied this extensively and has developed things for towns to go by, if he's available, or somebody comparable, a land use professional, and to help us through the process.
Writing a new ordinance, or adding a section to our.
Yeah, yeah.
And it feels like that, I mean, we can talk about ideas, but putting it into legal language, it'd be very helpful to have a consultant.
I mean, it's a thorny issue, I mean, a lot of people make money on this, and that's their livelihood, and.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, maybe even in Portland and Bar, I think there are exceptions for certain, like owner occupied and whatever, you know, things like that. I mean, I would pull, I would just pull three, I mean, we're not, it's not like reinvent the wheel here, I mean, people have been through this before.
Right.
And just get.
Bar Harbor one isn't that popular, is my understanding, and not just with the rentals, there's some issues with it, and don't ask me what they are, I don't know the specifics.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's interesting, that's not in the sense that I can.
Pardon?
That's not the same, I don't have the same sense that the Bar Harbor ordinance is unpopular.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure I have a good basis for that, except just.
Yeah, only people I talk to got.
Yeah. But it could be, it would be, one option would be for us to take that, change the Bar Harbor Tremont and have a public hearing and sort of ask the town for feedback about implementing Tremont.
But do we want to go that far, or we just want to go with just the registration and the inspection, life safety issues, make sure all that's covered?
I don't know.
That's the other thing too.
Right.
And as we know, in developing campground, changes to the campground ordinance, how long it took us to do that, this is going to take us quite a while, so I think it'd be nice to have some, some, some help.
I agree.
Means we're money.
Taking.
We need some money, you gotta hire some money.
Yeah. So, any more comments right now?
I'd just like to get some info from a couple different places.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, we can look at, gather all that together.
Yeah.
But, this is not a public hearing here, but I'm gonna allow public comment as long as people keep things short, okay? I see a hand back there, could you identify yourself, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Adam Silverman, Orlife Road to Brumheim. Just curious in terms of your reference to life safety and registration and checks. There are lots of rentals within town, within the town, we do not have a definition of short-term rental. Given your concerns, why make any definition for a short-term rental and not extend it to all rentals?
That's a good point, except for do we have, could we enforce that with a two-day-a-week CEO who also has to deal with other issues as well?
I don't think the likelihood or necessity to enforce based on the limitation of our town's CEO is what we should be basing our ordinance in.
What other rentals?
We, it's true, we don't have a definition for short-term rental, but we do have a definition for transient housing.
I mean, when you say safety, Mark, I mean, I think you're, you know, the couple of things you pointed out, it's like basically the nine-to-one-one list. I don't think you're talking about like sprinkler requirements and.
No, no, but smoke alarms definitely and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, you pretty much have to have that to get home insurance, you're supposed to.
Right.
So, I don't know, at least personally, I don't feel like this has a huge safety component to it, other than maybe saying you need to have in every place a current list of your EMS people or whatever. Beyond that, you know, their building codes, you know, you've gotta meet that and you have insurance and people, you know, I'm thinking about like, you're not gonna, one, you're not gonna require them to have like fire, you know, metal doors with whoever the time and stuff, it's like you would a hotel.
I'm not taking that far.
So, I, I don't, I don't actually don't view, I appreciate that little kerfuffle with the wrong number and stuff like that, I think that's easy to fix though. And I don't think that we have a lot of other safety stuff that we would overlay, at least I don't feel like.
It's really, if we borrowed the Bar Harbor ordinance, that would include a bunch more.
EMS laws? Like what, like?
Windows, you have to have egress windows. And that's part of building code to have a bedroom, but in Tremont, there's no enforcement of the building code.
Right, okay, but it's part of the building code?
Yeah. And so, so, I think the question, and what's your name?
Adam.
Adam. It's, I don't know, it's not exactly his question, but it's an interesting point about like, do we, do we expect or require, if you register and do a search for rental, do you have to meet building code? If that's true, then we'll need to increase our CEO hours, and we'll get our selectmen. Because then we're inspecting and making sure that probably you need to meet building code. I don't know that, I don't know that we're going that far, I'm not sure, that's more regulation and more oversight, it's probably safer, but.
This is why it'd be good to have somebody to help us through this process. Hold on, Adam, definition of transient is a person staying at a place that does not constitute his or her home or usual dwelling unit for less than seven days? I see a hand raised there.
I'm Ingrid Cashmire, I own a property over on David Lane in Bernard that has three cottages that were, that are seasonal, that were built in nineteen sixty-five and have been rented consistently since then, and a house that was built down on the water in nineteen eighty-five that has been active weekly since then. So, my question or my comments would be, I think Noel Mossen would be a valuable participant in this conversation. I think you also need to define what you're trying to solve. If you're trying to limit seasonal or weekly rentals, then, you know, to me, this, I've been, I've been listening to this conversation for a while and have been for years having conversations about workforce housing needs on this island. And I think that to presume that Airbnb and VRBO and online platforms have created this rental environment that exists here is, is not an accurate reflection of what has actually taken place, because what I would be curious to know is how many rentals have been in this town or in other towns on the island for decades, right? You can't just presume that this all started when the online platform was created, because there have been a lot of properties that have been rented weekly for decades here, and so so are we trying to solve workforce housing? If that is the case, and I think that we need that absolutely on this island, limiting weekly rentals is not gonna drop any property values here in town down to what would be considered workforce housing, sales prices. So, I think you have to try to incentivize in a different way. And I think Noel could be helpful, I also think that, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of smart people here. Get, get some kind of committee with people who have diverse interests in this conversation and talk through some of this stuff. Bar Harbor has, has created, I think, a mess over there that is by no means solving the problem that they're trying to create. You are concerned about the safety piece, I think that makes sense to a degree, but there's probably hundreds of people who are living in this town year-round in homes that don't have egress windows, that don't have smoke detectors, you know, I mean like, so I think, I think that there is just multiple facets to this conversation, that just picking Bar Harbor's plan or Portland's plan that failed would not be the right way. You guys have enough.
So, we're not talking.
I don't, I don't think that's the idea.
You look at it, just to see what they did, to see what other people think of it.
Yeah, no, that's why you use it as a guide, so you have an opportunity to attack this problem in a really thoughtful manner, which I think a lot of communities have not done, to actually solve the problem you're trying to solve.
Right, you raise a great point, like what is the problem? You know, I've heard, you know, you hear a lot about, you know, people, we get this big problem and when you, and, you know, I don't know if you follow kind of what went on the last couple of years with the campgrounds and whatnot, but, you know, kind of when you drill right down to it, what the issue is, the people are here, don't want anyone else coming.
Yeah.
That's what it boils down to, and so, you know, how do you solve that? I don't know, you kind of, you try to do it. My part of the answer is, well, you live in a park, you live in a national park, this is where you decide, well, guess what, people are gonna come here. And, you know, so.
Ingrid, you're probably aware, we're just starting this conversation, okay? I mean, you have valid points, and we're certainly not gonna jump into anything and look at the whole picture. I, I think one concern is, you know, there seems to be a difference between, you know, you or somebody else owning one or two of these things, and instead, what we, what we also see going on is corporations coming in and buying up a number of houses in Southwest and here and renting them all out. And so, you know, it might not even be a local owner for that matter.
Sure, but I have to go back to the fact that if they are paying five hundred thousand dollars for that house, that's not a workforce housing family that is, that, that lost out on that, right? I mean, unfortunately, I mean, depending on what side of the equation you're on, whether you're the seller or the buyer, housing prices on this island have skyrocketed.
Right, oh, right, I mean, that's, that's another issue entirely.
It's multifaceted.
Yeah, yeah. Did I see another hand? Art, oh, sorry, Kevin, Art first.
I'd like to, I'm Mark Payne from Bernard, and I don't think the twenty-five people who, who signed a petition have any, I know some of them, they're not concerned about fire extinguishers or calling the fire department. They're concerned, they're concerned, and I am a little bit, I'm concerned about a couple of things, and I'll try not to be too long, but I think they're concerned concerned about the character of the island, basically. They're concerned that the island will only be millionaires, like in Antucket or like Aspen. And that, like Aspen, Antucket's an island, so they take their Learjets back and forth with teachers aboard. However, not Learjets, but they do, they do have teachers on airplanes in IANS because they can't live on that. But in Aspen, there's huge traffic changes. Up the Valley Road into Aspen during the day and they leave at night, and no one stays in town for a millionaire, and people who can afford to stay at an Airbnb, which is very, very highly priced. I think the people that signed that petition are really concerned with the character of the island, and is there such a thing as a winter rental anymore? Or is there such a thing as affordable rental? It's a bit inflationary, you know, when Gordius, instead of having someone who lives here, has to hire someone who comes from La Jolla, Cherryfield, Mr. Sturman coming from Cherryfield to get here at three o'clock in the morning, so who knows when they'll leave. Those people, twenty-five people who signed that petition are concerned, this is like a comprehensive plan thought, what do we want our island to look like? Okay, that's number one, I think that's what they're concerned, they vote. For me, I'm a little bit of a right-winger about registration and all of this, the town's gotta know this and that. That's just too many rules and regulations, even for me, and I'm not really on that side of the aisle, but that's not a concern. To me, the character of the island is an important concern. The other concern I have, which can be addressed with existing law, if ordinances are enforced, is what happened, what has happened to me. In my house in Bernard, where a home next door to mine, the sole site unseen, has a four-bedroom house, and they, after the, the real estate agent advertised a four-bedroom house, Leonard Vack, Augusta, and the wastewater people said it's two bedrooms, single-family home. As a result, in seven years, their septic field was so overused by the kind of use that Airbnb people do, they come from the city, they have city water, they take Hollywood showers, blah, blah, blah. They want clean water, so of course there are salts being put in there that make the Bernard water look crystal clear. That ruins the little microbes, they don't like that, the septic systems are gone, the town is in serious negotiation with the poor people who ended up buying this place for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And site unseen. They wanna keep the four bedrooms they thought they bought. It's a mess, and I will tell you that the soil profile of our little site in the dock is not gonna handle it when the house next door to me, on the other side, which is for sale, has a three-bedroom house, even though Augusta says it's a two-bedroom, single-family home, is for sale for one point three million dollars, and someone wanted to turn it into a wedding bed with people from the city, used the city water, going in there and freshening up, and, I mean, that septic system, which is right next to mine, would have failed in five years rather than seven years. Existing law, looking at those properties, at least where things don't work out, could take care of some of the concerns within the law that we actually have. The bigger comprehensive plan concern of how the island changes, other than doing something which, again, I'm like a right-winger, I don't think the government should be able to say, we're gonna put a cap on you, only twelve percent of the people in Bar Harbor can have Airbnbs, that sounds a little bit, as Margaret Taylor Green would say, Gestapo. No, no, Gispacho, that's Gispacho. But short of that, I don't see a solution, short of the, I don't see a solution in the future. That's all I have to say.
I wasn't at the selectmen's meeting when this was discussed, but, and maybe Jane can tell us, but I, I did watch the tape, at least that part of it, and I thought, one of the reasons, one of the things the petitioners were interested in is finding out the extent of the issue. Right?
Because I had asked the town manager and other people, what is the situation with short-term rentals here? I keep hearing about it in other places in Maine, what is it like in my town? And I was told, there's no way to know. When I talked with a neighbor about this, her suggestion was, well, it's them just making the short-term rental people register, let's make everybody in town indicate how their property is being used, when they pay their taxes. And you can check multiple things, I have a small business, I have a residence, I have short-term rentals, I have long-term rentals, I'm, you know, whatever you want, whatever the town would deem it. She said, but that way you have data that's comprehensive, so that everybody in town can look at it, and as we look at who we wanna be, and who we are, and who we can possibly be, then we have the information we need to make that kind of data.
I mean, it's true, it's like even on the COF Plan, remember, we've discussed this with the COF Plan Task Force, and there's no accurate way to gauge the extent of the.
Yeah, Noel had talked about taking sort of, you know, baby steps or, you know, successive steps, and the first step being just a data gathering exercise, you know, put something in place where we can get some data.
Maybe do a census once every five years or something.
Yeah.
But, but then again, we also have, been imposed a deadline by our, a select board.
Yeah, I think the thing that's interesting is if the real, if the real concern, it's bizarre, it's just, the economics of the whole thing are interesting. If the concern is that, is that the island, the character of the island will change, and it will become an island of multimillionaires, so to try to limit short-term rentals is not the problem, right? It's the, it's the seasonal folks that can buy, it's interesting how you, like, the real issue is people with big money who wanna come in and just have, live here a part year, you live here in summer and go away. And so, what, and all, but part of part, but also short-term rentals, which are tend to, gonna be, gonna tend to be in some cases, people who live here trying to earn a certain amount of a living, they're gonna tend to be actually people in the lower economic class, that's what we're going after. So, it's just kind of interesting that when you look at, if the real goal is concerned with the character of the island and and millionaires coming in and, you know, and being unaffordable, you know, what we're focused on is a socioeconomic group that's not actually at the top of the chain, and not the folks that are really, really driving home properties. I'll just make that comment.
Well, I think there's, there are at least two layers of the character of our town, with, I think, one of which is economic, like socio-economic, like how much money does each house or property have? The other is how much time they spend in our community. And so, I think that there's, like, the workforce housing concern and like how do we make affordable housing, that's one goal. Another goal would be, we want the people who are here to be here longer than a week. And it's okay if they are billionaires, like, we're not gonna try to make them, you know, but we want to incentivize people to stay here for a season instead of a week, or make it, and that would be a different slice or piece of the character that we're trying to enhance or preserve.
Kevin, can you wait for Kevin?
I've been reading very patiently.
He, he had his head up first, I've been ignoring him, because he wouldn't let me use his vehicle. I was jagwiring my car, it was in the shop, so, go ahead, Kevin.
I was gonna step back a lot and kind of follow up on what Jamie had said, I'm Kevin Back, I'm on the select board, as part of the discussion, and we asked you folks to look into this. We're looking at generalities, you know, is this something that the town's really concerned about? If it is, how do we regulate it? How do we track it? That kind of thing. And there's a lot of concerns, I mean, there was discussion on whether non-resident owners are treated differently than resident owners. The, the septic concern that Art mentioned earlier is, is a concern, I think, to a lot of us. No municipal water supply and septic in town, everything's private wells and private sewings. Some of these houses have been built with three bedrooms and they're being rented to twelve to sixteen people. Doing that is gonna start contaminating wells. Things like that are a definite problem. You know, maybe regulating some of that, I mean, I know, I, I believe that South Portland has put something forward where they have, they allow two people per bedroom plus a couple extra people in the house, so if you got a three-bedroom house, you can put eight people in it, max. You know, we're just looking to get some kind of a feedback on, you know, do we. do we look at registered properties so we can track it? Do we look at some basic rules to limit it? Or do we just say, to heck with it and not track anything and let it go? You know, there's concerns about whether it's taken away from year-round housing. Yeah, it probably does some. I don't think it's the villain that has painted. You know, but again, do you want to try to deal with that kind of thing? I, I, correct me, Jamie, but I think that's kind of where we're shooting for. No, no specific, you know, fine detailed regulations. More like, how do we move forward on this and then work towards the regulatory part of it if that's what everyone decides they want to do?
And I think when, when you were speaking about a deadline, Mark, it wasn't a deadline to do something drastic. It was just a deadline so that this didn't get swept under the rug and then six months, oh, well, we forgot to put this on the agenda. We just want to have it attended to. It wasn't like Kevin, exactly what he just said. We weren't looking for anything drastic, you know, we weren't, it was just a, do you agree with this? Do you not agree with this? Do you think? That's why I thought, the first thing I thought would be a public hearing to get more than, I mean, we're throwing around ideas now, like Lawson had about using Bar Harbor's stuff. I mean, that's just, that's a long ways down the road. This, this should be, you know, I think we just want to get a pulse of what everybody wanted and then kind of, you know.
You're talking about a public hearing by the select board?
Uh, no, it would be by you, I believe.
Oh, okay. Oh, I did, yeah, okay, yeah. Or a joint public hearing, too.
Shit, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I'll find that, but I don't know how to get it worked, Mark. But there's some really good ideas on, I've heard from, you know, I have a, a weekly rental. I also own a few year-round rentals, and so I understand both sides of it. And I think that, similar to what Brett said, I think there's a lot of other issues that come into play for affordable housing. I think we need to figure out a way to promote workforce housing and people to build workforce housing in town. I think that there's a lot of good ideas. I've heard a ton of them. I think that's why, like a public hearing, you're going to hear a lot of those ideas and different ways that the town could promote it and, and try to get some, you know, some year-round housing in there.
I'll just throw my hat at it really quick.
Is it, Danine?
Danine, yeah, Danine Welsh on Bass Harbor Woods Road. So, and we've only lived here a year, but on Bass Harbor Woods Road itself, within that year, there have been at least three houses built that are now Airbnb's. That's all they are. And, and.
Owned by the same person?
But, well, there are five on that street.
Owned by the same person, yes.
Right, so it's not just corporations, I mean, it is corporations.
Yeah, I'm sure it's an LLC, come on.
Right, but just in terms of character of the town, right? We have next door to us, behind us, around the corner, I mean, there's, it's constant. And especially during the summer, not so much in the winter. But it, it really is impactful to have that much short-term rental around you all the time.
It's tough to get to know your neighbors, huh?
Well, but they're not neighbors, right?
Right, that's right.
They're not neighbors. It's a problem.
They don't have any, any. So that, that's interesting. I didn't mention that before, but I've heard complaints about noise, late-night partying and that sort of thing, atypical of your neighborhood before these things came in, right?
Yeah, it's very, it's very loud, especially Jim and Laura, I think, have the brunt of it. But, but it's definitely.
Well, he's a rock musician. He should be used to it.
I'd much rather hear him through an open window than what we otherwise hear from him.
Do you know what's loud if I can hear?
I got you.
You could go do American Gothic every once in a while and have a glare.
Sorry, Mark, just one word.
Yes.
So, sorry, like, Art, thank you. I think the cap is a really good idea, not to punish people, but just so that we don't get overrun, right? And I know that Bar Harbor does that, and I, and one of the things I think that Bar Harbor does, and I know this is potentially a topic for another time, but, but if you miss the application, it's every year you renew, I think. And if you miss it, you're dying, right? So if you don't renew in time, you no longer can be a rental until, I guess you can go on a waitlist or something like that.
Until you build employee housing, then you can get back on the list after 10 years.
So, but anyway, yeah.
Art, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I think that if you convened jointly or no matter who the host, no matter who the host is, if you had a public forum of, particularly Airbnb, it's the most successful idea I can think of in years. It only started, I don't know, seven or eight years ago. It started with people crashing on people's coaches in San Francisco, and in no time at all. I'd love, would love to do a survey of real estate agents and find out how many homes, either the homes themselves or an attendant adjoining building, have been purchased with Airbnb in mind. I think it would shock you a lot. And I do, about the demographic, I think there are like three demographics that we talk about on the island. There's people like me who are living in the woods for a long time before we were able to live in a house while we were working here 40 years ago. There are people who really need a home. It'd be nice if a stern man or a guy that owns a lobster boat can live on the island, own what he's fishing. So there's real people. And there's real people who have trouble paying their taxes and want to come up with some income from, to help pay the taxes. I don't think that is a major part of the market. And it's certainly millionaires, I mean, multimillionaires who own beautiful mansions. There's fewer of those in Tremont. We don't see them much because they're way over on the west side. We never visit those roads. The vast number of people that I know who are doing Airbnbs in Bernard, let's say, are millionaires, probably multimillionaires, who love the idea of having an Airbnb. They don't love the idea of opening their home or another home they own to people of year up who might have cats, they want smoke, you know, it takes a certain amount of smoking. No, they're renting to other upper-class, highly educated people, and they're doing it partly for fun. The wives love decorating a place and putting granite on the tops and all of these things in and greeting people of their own stripe, different ones every week. And making, by the way, a pile of money, but they don't need the money. A person at the end of my street, there's a eminent doctor, they have an Airbnb. David Ensign's a wonderful guy. I don't know if he runs an Airbnb or not, but they don't need the money. They're doing it partly because it's fun. It's, I think it's a terrible thing to deny them their fun. But the real issue is, you gotta have places that real people can live. That's the number one issue.
It's not fun.
Danine, you mentioned cap, and were you talking about cap for individual owners or cap on the town itself?
Bar Harbor has a cap, and I think, and I don't remember, the article that I read, there's a, I think there was a percentage of owner occupied. So there's a certain percentage of the town, I think, that could be owner occupied rentals. And then there was another percentage that was, I'm a vacant house and I'm just going to rent it out every week for the whole season, or, you know, so, so I think there's a couple of different ways that you can look at it to, to the, to other points that have been made. You know, the, the five people, the five houses on our street that are completely empty and run by one guy who rents them out every week. Maybe a smaller percentage of those type versus the people who live here on the island and have cottages or homes that they're renting out. I don't know, but one option.
Anybody else, otherwise we're going to shut down the public comment here and go back to the board.
It's a public hearing, Dean?
Uh, well, I thought we could discuss that and, and do we want to make a motion to ask for some sort of professional help?
Good idea.
Was that a comment?
Came at the right time.
And believe me, we need professional help.
You know, Noel, you know, we discussed it with Noel in our, one of our conference of plan meetings. I don't know what that contract says and whether we can, you know, dip into that well and get some of the, some of the what we want from him.
Noel's been quite absent from this whole process now, so.
He came to one meeting. And we talked about, you know, Airbnb, and he was very much active in, I think, what went on in Bar Harbor. He's been in other towns as well.
He's helped in my desert, I know, and, and according to Jesse, he's developed what Jesse called a quote-unquote toolkit.
Toolkit?
Yeah, for these, of course, it's not a toolkit. He just hands out for free, so, yeah.
It's a $30,000 toolkit.
Oh, who knows? Who knows? And we don't even know, I know he's quite busy, so I don't know whether he can even do it, but because of his knowledge, because of his knowledge of the island.
I mean, we should, we should have, if the town really wants to do that, we should get Noel in there. Then we should have him have a public hearing and.
I, I think basically the question he's going to ask when you do it is, what's your appetite for regulation? You know, something like that.
Ask what?
I think if you start talking with Noel Musson or someone like that, they're going to say, how much regulation are you looking for? You know, do you want to restrict stuff? Do you, do you want to keep track of it? I think there's some decisions that need to be made before you even approach them.
Well, why wouldn't we have Noel at the public hearing where he could ask those questions of the people in attendance?
Yeah, maybe that'd be a good way to do it.
I mean, it can't cost him that much to come to the public hearing and say, hey, I'm, you know, just listen and then, and react and help us ask questions and, you know, help us, help facilitate the discussion.
I think that the process is not clear or straightforward enough that having a professional planner help guide us through that process would be money well spent.
But, yeah, he knows the questions to ask better than we.
But, I mean, look, the first little question is, are we just going to engage in a data gathering exercise? Or we're going to actually start to put some, you know, start to, you know, ratchet down? And, you know, I think you can help us walk through what that means and what that looks like and what it will cost and, you know, what he's seeing other towns doing and, and, yeah. I mean, we should, we should have a couple of public hearings probably, and I'm trying to think. It's a weird time of year, right? I mean, you, you don't get everyone, you don't get the, you know, summer folks at home, you know.
Right, but we, we, I mean, we, we should start this process.
Yeah.
We don't decide what the town, what the ordinance should be, right? We can help draft and write it, but the town's the one who's going to vote on it. We just have to figure out what to put in front of the voters in November.
Right, and so my point was, you know, when you're having a public hearing, at least I'm always cognizant of who the public's going to be there.
Right, and so we do it in February. It's different than doing it in July.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
We should probably do both.
If you did, sorry, if you did one by Zoom, so for people who are out of town.
Those are wonderful.
I don't think we can do Zoom anymore. We can't, I don't think we can do Zoom anymore.
Okay, is it illegal now?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. Bethany Fudge?
No, I just think the public hearing, you're going to get a lot from both sides.
Oh, yeah, that's what we want.
That's good.
So, so to me, the first thing is, when's the next selectman's meeting?
Next, I think next Tuesday, yeah.
Monday.
I mean, Monday, sorry, yeah.
Probably Tuesday, because Monday is the.
It is Tuesday.
It is Tuesday.
What color is this selectman? Green?
No, it's on Tuesday.
Some are Mondays. Yeah, green.
Holiday next one, holiday next one.
So what if we ask the selectmen or?
I would entertain a motion to ask the selectman and town manager to hire Noel Musson or some other professional to help us through the process.
So moved. Second. It was so well, he said it so great. He said, that's great.
You want to go home, don't you? You don't want to stay here until 10:00 or 12:00 like the last time? Okay, motion is second on the table to ask.
I mean, we've, you know, we've got, do they, yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Board the selectman and town manager to hire a professional, Noel Musson or some other planner or land use professional, help us through the process of doing something about weekly rentals, right? So, yeah, so. Any discussion?
No, I think it could be a fairly limited engagement at the outset. I think we'd want Noel to be available to, for a couple of public hearings and then to meet with us once after in a working session and then kind of go from there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? For nothing. Six more months. As far as a public hearing, yes, we need a public hearing. I agree. But I think we should deal with the Noel thing first or the planner thing.
To wait till after.
Well, find out, after they turn us down or something, hopefully they won't do that. Do you agree? Everybody agree?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to.
I don't think we need to sign it right now.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We want to, the, the select board's asked for our recommendations by August 1st.
Yes.
Which means we got a new life, but it also means that we don't have to panic and have a meeting immediately about this. Like, we have time to be able to do the, be thoughtful.
We don't know the professionals availability, for one, so there's, that could be slowing us down a little.
Yep.
And if it's, you know, I don't know whether the comp plan people would.
Well, that's the other thing worth mentioning is that at our comp plan meeting next week, we should also mention this and.
Yeah, next week or the week of?
Next week.
Next week.
What color's comp?
19.
Pardon?
What color's comp up there?
I doubt they have anything. I don't know, is it?
So I don't think it gets.
Blues harbor, okay.
It's Thursday.
You can see that four. Yeah, it's going to be next, it'll be the 19th.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
There is a land use workshop by the comp plan scheduled for, was it February 2nd?
Yes.
Is that something that you could combine some of that with or bring that make that part of the discussion?
It, yes, it's, yeah, the agenda on the February 2nd meeting is a lot broader than weekly rentals. But it's, but it includes that, land use in general, so.
Maybe we could start the conversation with that.
I don't, I don't want to get the process too confused between the two different boards. You know, I mean, that might be part of it. We don't even know what they want to do with the land use workshop until we meet on the 18th, right, or the 19th.
Well, several of us are on multiple boards and committees or task forces, so.
Anything else? Any comments from the public quickly?
Thank you. That's a wrap.
You think, you, you think you can get that on the agenda on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should be tomorrow.
I'll, I'll call Jesse tomorrow too or go visit and let him know. Okay, thanks, folks, for all your input. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from everybody again. Okay, take a motion to schedule our next meeting for January 24th.
Our big motion is to schedule our next meeting on January 24th at 6:00 p.m. in the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room. All in favor?
Second.
Motion second on table to schedule the meeting for January 24th at 6:00 a.m. right here in Harvey Kelly Meeting Room. All in favor? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
I thought sure we'd be here.